Good evening and welcome to the June 25th, the regular meeting of the Edina School Board. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes. We've got minutes from the regular meeting of May 21st and also a special meeting on June 11th. Can I have a motion please?
Moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st and special meeting of June 11th. Any discussion or edits to the minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have three minor modifications tonight to the agenda this evening. First item, items G and H, the 2012-14 Guidebook of Professional Employment and the 2012-14 Guidebook of Professional Employment, both of them out of community ed. One is for the coordinators and one is for the service employees. Those are amended. And then also Schedule D of Policy 509 was incorrectly inserted into the agenda. Can I have a motion to make those changes?
So moved, second.
So moved and seconded to modify items G and H and also under action items and item G under discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of making those changes to the agenda this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Rick, could, if you could walk us through the agenda for tonight's meeting, please?
I certainly will. We do have presentations again, both from Creek Valley Elementary School as well as reports on our Edina Alt Comp Plan, our student wellness report, and the upcoming 2013-14 budget. We have a variety of consent agenda items. Our action items are filled with planning for next year, including the budget. There are several different budgets within that budget we'll be reviewing. We have a health and safety budget and a report on that as well. We'll be finalizing our strategic plan at tonight's meeting and the board will hopefully be approving that, which will put us into action as soon as we hit July. We also have a variety of policies that we'll be looking at in the discussion phase of the agenda. Also in the action items, I should mention there's a variety of items related to our technology. This was influenced heavily by our technology levy as well as some instructional supplies. And that would then conclude our agenda for tonight.
Thanks, Rick. First item is a recognition. Mads Power of Youth, National Teen Influence Group. Thomas?
Tom Balky is here tonight, another one of our amazing graduates of Edina High School. But Tom has had an amazing run here in Edina Public Schools, being recognized just endlessly for his hours of volunteering and giving back. Most recently, Tom was recognized by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving and State Farm as one of five students from across the nation who participate in the first ever Power of Youth National Teen Influencer Group. And Tom, I know you're very deserving of that, but why don't you tell us a little bit about some of your work that you did over the past years that helped shape this decision made by Mads and State Farm?
Well, I've just been really working with Sober Squad, thanks to Janet Shank mostly. She got me started in it and set me up with all the time to go and speak. And I went and spoke to kids through fifth through ninth grade for the past three years.
So the report has you speaking to over 900 elementary middle school students and participating in 34 different panel presentations. So this wasn't just a few. What was that passion drive for you to tell the story?
Well, I like getting out of school, but...
Got to go bigger, Tom.
No, no, what I like, I just like, I like helping out kids. And this was a very easy way for me to get out and spread my message and talk to kids about what I believe in and why I think they should do what they do and be sober.
So what is that message? I mean, what was that influence on you that held you so strongly to those values?
Probably my parents. They've always been a big influence on me. I always look up to them, still do, probably always will.
That's fantastic. And next year, your plans are?
I'm going to play football at St. Olaf.
In Olaf, there you are. And how will you use this, because there's a set of skills here. It wasn't just in Sober Squad, but you were volunteering in all areas of our school. How will you see the work that you had an opportunity to participate here at the high school being used at St. Olaf and maybe beyond that in your future?
Well, I would like to try and study law at St. Olaf. And so that'll take a lot of speaking if I become a court lawyer. But also I've thought about politics, maybe. So we'll see what happens with this.
Tom Balky, congratulations. We wish you the very best. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Creek Valley. Carrie? Carrie Dahlquist and her Go Mads team. I'm hoping one of these people here is not a student, Dr. Dahlquist. I'm hoping one of these people in front of us is not a student. So if you want to grab a microphone, and the floor is yours.
Well, thanks for letting us come and present today. My name is Carrie Dahlquist. I'm the principal at Creek Valley.
Nancy Zubor, special education teacher at Creek Valley.
Susan Charles, elementary music teacher at Creek Valley.
And Britt Thies, first grade teacher at Creek Valley.
I'm good, Norma Chell, and I'm going to fifth grade.
I'm Margot Prescott, and I'm going to fifth grade.
I'm Farida Osman, I'm going to fifth grade.
I'm Eddie Murray, I'm going into fifth grade.
I'm Caroline Murray, I'm going into fifth grade.
All right, so we're going to be talking about PBIS, which is another acronym. It stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and it's the behavioral piece of RTI. So we're going to go through a few slides and then we'll have our students talk about the changes that we've seen at Creek Valley this year. So the goals include...
Our goals that we have put into place are, we wanted to be more purposeful in how we teach the school-wide expectations and behavior. And so we have provided teachers with a lot of language and we teach that in the classroom, but also we do it indirectly through visuals with posters provided throughout the school in common areas such as the lunchroom, hallways, bus ramp, playground areas. And then also we show, have shown some videos on lunchroom behavior and fire safety drills so that students all have that common knowledge on how Creek Valley expects students to behave at school. Also, we provide students with positive incentives, which we'll go into a little bit more later. And also, we collect data on behaviors and so we can see what areas in the school we might need to work on more, whether it's on the playground or in the lunchroom.
I feel so fortunate to be here to speak about PBIS because we had this kind of in the thinking process for the last several years. And with the help of Susan Charles and a few others, spearheaded us to work on committee working toward this goal. And it is amazing what we have accomplished in one year. You know, at the Edina Public Schools, how important data collection is. Teachers are continually looking at data. Usually it's on an academic point of view to see how progress is happening or where there's areas of need for our children. What we also knew in Creek Valley that we all, another area of need is for behavior and how to model it and how to teach it because we found that direct teaching will help students to follow school rules. So in your folder, we have a referral form. And within that referral form guides us to collect data. So on that referral form, there's an area for the teacher's name, the grade, the date, the time, the place, that a certain rule was not followed. And that is then entered and collected in the school office. And then, again, we enter that data into the Swiss data entry. And why this is important, we begin to see patterns of behavior. Do we see more infractions happening, let's say, in the cafeteria or in the hallways or in unstructured environment? Or is it happening in classroom or out in recess? So looking at that data helps us to devise a more careful plan and how to provide positive interventions for our students to learn and act.
And then when we were starting to think about a new system and a new way of teaching our behavior expectations, we surveyed our teachers two years ago to see if there was buy-in, if there were teachers that really felt that beyond their own classroom, there was something that we needed. And we had about 85% of our teachers who were looking for something that we could hold on to as a whole school. And as we've gone on, we've had more buy-in as we go. So we applied for this state grant and have been able to have our eight members of our PBIS team have lots of training from the state and also this Swiss data collection software system that they've let us use as well for these two years. We've had six days of training this past year, some in the summer and then some during the school year. And then we have three more days coming this next school year where they'll be giving us some more support and guidance as we develop PBIS at Creek Valley. We've had some site visit already at Creek Valley by an evaluator to see if our implementation of PBIS has some forward motion and had a very good response from that. I think we were at 92% implementation, which is wonderful for our first year. And we've also had some surveys of our staff and we'll have some feedback from them as time goes on to make sure that we are getting the message across and that they're understanding what the expectations are and how we're going to teach them.
So you'll see some of the accomplishments demonstrated by our students, but some of them have been line item budget by the PTA. So they're supporting this and they've helped by our Bobcat mascot new this year, our Golden Cutlery, which you'll see in a minute. There's a matrix of expectations in your folder, so they've also helped pay for signage. It's prettier than that and laminated when it's in the hallways. We had a new school rule, and you'll hear about that as well, including a contest. And then at the end of the presentation, we will show you one of our short videos that we have made that we show students. We've made two this year and we hope to make about three or four next year.
We have a contest at our school which involves a school rule. The school, the students can make posters about our school rule. And the reward is they get hung in the hallways of Creek Valley. And there was two winners this year, and there's both of them.
In your folders right now, there are an example of Bobcats. You could earn them in many different ways. One way to earn a Bobcat is if an adult sees you doing something safe, respectful, responsible, and then he or she will give it to you and then you have to put your name on it and then put it in the Bobcat bin and wait till Pride Day.
Every pride, every month at Pride Day, one of the Bobcats is drawn from each class that to show as a pride reward for being respectful, safe, and responsible. And that person will then get a Go Mads pin to show that they have made a difference. And they get their picture taken, and they get their picture taken with all of the other winner, reward person, people who've drawn it, which will then be on the school slideshow after announcements for a month.
We also have something at our school called the Golden Cutlery Award. The Golden Cutlery is rewarded to a grade level who leaves no trace in the lunchroom. Their reward is they get to walk around with the Golden Cutlery in the hallways.
After recess and lunch, the grades come in and they have to walk to their classrooms without an adult watching over them. And the grade that's the quietest in the hallways will earn an extra recess.
So Pride Days are monthly assemblies we have, and each Pride Day begins like this.
We are, we are respectful. Roar! We are, we are responsible. Roar! We are, we are safe. Roar! We are, we are respectful. Roar! We are, we are responsible. Roar! We are, we are safe. Roar!
Very nice.
The school rule is...
I will act in a safe, respectful, and responsible way.
Our Bobcat oath is...
Creek Valley Elementary School is a welcoming community of safe, respectful, and responsible citizens. We learn and make a positive difference.
We also have a school song. It's sung to the twins theme.
We're from Creek Valley, come hear us roar. We're from Creek Valley, watch our learning soar. Safe and respectful, responsible are we. We love our positive community.
We all, and we end our Pride Days like this. R-E-S-P-E-C-T.
We're respectful at C V.
We are S-A-F-E-T-U.
Responsible, that's me and you.
Let's Go Mads! Let's go out and make a difference.
Thus our T-shirts, Go Mads is our motto. So we have a short video to show you. This is an example of one of our drills. When evacuating the building, be sure to remain silent. Go to the safe place designated for your teacher. Remember, each teacher has a different safe place. When you have made it to your safe place, face away from the building. When the all-clear has been given, follow your teacher's directions and re-enter the building quietly. And remember, act in a safe, respectful, and responsible way. What questions do you have for us?
Thank you. Questions?
Number one, I'm super impressed. I suppose just on a personal level, I want to know who wrote the song, who did the... Mrs. Charles, did you have anything to do with that?
We had a team effort.
A team effort, okay. I remember from when my son was at Creek Valley and also when I mentored at Creek Valley that I was always impressed by your iCare Pride assemblies. Is there any link between what Creek Valley used to do and what you're doing now?
We had a really strong foundation to jump from. So we, our old-school rule is I will act in a safe and respectful way. We added responsible. We're just trying to cover more ground essentially. So yes, we, that was a great starting place for us. We've always integrated the iCare values. You'll notice in your folders, you have one of the iCare buttons as well.
Can I ask one of the students, or maybe more than one can answer? Do you see a difference in the way students are acting this year after you've started this new program?
Well, they seem more excited to behave better. And I think we end up being quieter than we would if they won't any contests or...
Is it, is it a fun thing to have the Golden Cutlery in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
I have a question. I mean, first of all, I am very impressed. Well done, and thank you so much for being here. I'm wondering if any of the students or a few of you could just talk a little bit about what's fabulous about Creek Valley? What makes it feel good to be there?
Well, I just think it's fun because everyone's nice and everything, and it's just a really fun school to go to.
Well, it's fun that, like, we do stuff like when it's, like, Halloween, by there, we do parties and stuff like that, but we still learn at the same time and stuff like that.
It's fun to do all those contests because, because, I don't know.
Well, I like it because of, like, the teachers and staff are really nice in the contests, too.
So I was curious, on the referral forms that you put together, what have you started to notice? Where are your hot spots, as it were?
So that's a revised referral. We used to have a referral as well. They're really meant to be an education tool. What happened? What were you thinking? What would you think differently next time when it comes back up? Would you make a different choice? So it's supposed to be kind of a problem-solving tool. It's also supposed to be a communication tool with home. I think what we find mostly is the common areas, which is what we're working on recess especially, more students, fewer adults, unstructured. And when I call parents, I always say, you know, you always, you want your kids to make mistakes because that gives them experience for what to do better next time, and it's not a bad thing necessarily, but...
And we haven't probably been collecting as long as next year we'll be able to tell you, yes, definitely, we saw that we needed to work on the cafeteria behavior, and so we did such and such and so-and-so to be able to make that work. This has been in place, this, this part of the data collecting, maybe the last two months of school.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a great summer, everybody. Thanks for being here. Yeah. Next up, we have our term of compensation annual report. Dr. Jenny Nerlin Weaver and team. Welcome, the crew, to talk a little bit about the success in the year of Edina Alt Comp.
So, we're here this evening to talk about Alt Comp this year, and some of this is a state requested opportunity to share with you the work that we've been involved in. I'm joined tonight by Libby Hokinson, Libby Sandvig, who has been our facilitator this year for the first time through, which has been great, and by Rhonda Jonas-Giri, who is one of the coaches who will actually be stepping in for Libby for a bit while Libby's on maternity leave next year as well. So, congrats all around.
Thank you. It's hard to believe, we just finished the fourth year of Edina Alt Comp, and I would say it was, again, a very successful year. All of the work that we do in Alt Comp is really guided by the mission statement that we created four years ago, which is enhancing teachers' professional growth to support student success. And I think this really guides the work that the coaches do in every meeting with teachers from goal-setting in the fall through all of the observations and the reflective conversations they engage in after each observation.
Some of you know more about this than others, but cognitive coaching is the coaching model that we use predominantly with Alt Comp. One of the interesting things to recognize about cognitive coaching is it doesn't require a teacher-coach to be in a specific content area. The coaching process itself is content-neutral and really relies on the notion that you're building the teacher's efficacy or the teacher's sense that they know how to do what they do well. It helps by strengthening and refining the beliefs that people have, and so it's a, it's a great basis from that perspective. One of the other things that we're recognizing is that teachers are beginning to build such trusting relationships with those coaches that they're surfacing their own content questions, and then sometimes the coaches will go to content specialists to work with them as well. Sure, skip right over that one. When we talk about the value of cognitive coaching, just to lay out, these are some of the training components that we work with. This is research on the value of cognitive coaching and the work that we do, but really talks about the importance of not only studying the theory and looking at demonstrations, but you'll see that when you start to look at what the actual transfer of the knowledge and the skill set is, the cognitive coaching really has one of the highest rates of return, if you will, in the time investment in the coaching process. We're pleased to show that to you.
This year, the seven coaches plus myself had over 4,400 individual meetings with teachers. And these included both goal-setting for individual professional goals and student goals in the fall, the three components of the observation cycles with the pre-observation, observation, and post. And then throughout the year, coaches continued to check in with teachers on the progress of their student learning goals by reviewing data and looking at the impact of both pedagogy and assessments on student achievement. Here is a year at a glance, so to speak, with the number of meetings coaches had with teachers during this time period. You can see there's an ebb and a flow during the year based upon school calendar, our deadlines within Alt Comp. And then in May, we have quite a spike because we are finishing the observation process and the coaches were meeting with all the teachers to wrap up their student learning goals. There are three components to Edina Alt Comp. The first component is the Professional Growth Plan, which is the observation element. And this component starts in the fall with coaches and teachers meeting to set up a teacher's specific professional growth plan where they pick two out of five areas. Each teacher is observed at minimum three times, twice by their coach. With these observations, there's also a pre-observation conference and a post-observation conference. For the third observation, teachers are able to select someone of their choosing for the observation. This could be an administrator, a peer, another coach, or a TOSA. This year, administrators asked to work with eight non-provocationary teachers on their professional growth plan, and as a whole, nine teachers did not meet their professional growth plan this year, five of whom were probationary and four non-provocationary. Of the five probationary teachers, four were identified as being non-renewed for performance reasons, and according to our MOU, they do not earn incentives when that is the reason for their non-renewal. The second component of our plan is the student learning goal. And in the fall, teachers, coaches meet with teachers to discuss the student learning goals, where the emphasis of the goal really is on increasing student achievement by implementing a process or a product-focused goal. This year, quite a few teachers chose to work on team goals or goals that were aligned with the PLC work that they were engaged in. But all goals are aligned to the site goals at each location. Thirteen teachers did not receive the SLG incentive, four of whom were those teachers who were non-renewed for performance reasons, and then the remaining nine were non-provocationary staff members who did not implement their plans. And the final component is the Site Improvement Plan, which is the part of our program which is tied to the MCA math or reading tests. In the fall, each site selects their focus and they create a plan focused on strategies which will help move their site towards reaching that particular goal. This year, the goals were approved in October due to the delay in the release of the MCA math scores. And we should have, well, excuse me, in May, each site did submit an evaluation of their sit plan that was reviewed by a group of five of us. And we are waiting the MCA results this summer, and once we have those, we'll know how the incentives are distributed. Each spring, we do send out a survey to teachers. This year, it was sent in mid-May, and we had 238 respondents, which is up a bit from years past. And I thought I'd just highlight a few of the responses. This graph shows the percentage of teachers of the 238 who answered responded that they agree or they strongly disagree with this statement. So to begin, the statement... So to begin, the statement is, "I am more intentional with my instructional practices and job performance due to my student learning goal." Eighty-one point five percent of teachers indicated that they agree or strongly agree with that statement. "My participation in Altcomp helped me grow as a teacher." Eighty point five percent of teachers indicated that they agree or strongly agree. "My participation in Altcomp has had a positive effect on student achievement." Seventy-seven point two percent of teachers agree or strongly agree. "Our district's participation in Altcomp has had a positive effect on student achievement." Seventy-five point six percent of teachers. And then finally, "I am more intentionable, intentional about connecting my work to my site's student achievement goal because our district's participation in Altcomp." Seventy-five point four percent of teachers indicated that they agree or strongly agree with that statement. There was a place for comments on the survey and to just highlight a few of those. "Any structured opportunity to be reflective on how I teach is of great benefit." "I am energized by the opportunity for reflection on my lessons." "It has been an excellent program to help me focus on goal setting and feel a sense of accomplishment at the end of the year." "The level of professionalism and focus on student achievement supports why I went into education." And I think all of these comments again emphasize the mission of Altcomp. Linking opportunities for professional growth and student success.
So, in some summary, um, the strengths of the program as it exists today. And as you know, we've renewed the MOU for the program, so we're headed into another cycle. And we'll continue to work to align that then with the teacher evaluation language that's coming from the State Department of Education. The cognitive coaching model's been a strong one for us. We're going to continue to seek other opportunities to enhance that as well. Um, one of the things that we know is we have a couple of coaches who are very interested in talking about what coaching for equity looks like as well. And so talking about that as well as specific questions teachers have around content. Um, we know that we have more teachers who are taking risks and inviting their coaches into challenging situations. So rather than just invite you into my favorite lesson that I've always done and I know it goes very well, I might say to you, you know, this lesson is brand new or I have this third hour class that I'm never quite sure what to do with. And those kinds of questions are coming up with greater frequency. So we're happy to know that that level of trust and sort of invitation into the unknown is happening. Increasingly, we see more rigorous student learning goals. And so we're pleased to see people ramping up their intentional thinking around what is it that I'm going to do to move my students along this year. And I am pleased to say that we continue to enjoy a very strong coaching team. Um, we have a new coach coming on next year. Wendaing is going to be joining the group from Cornelia Elementary School. And in addition, um, we're bringing in sort of a substitute coach this year who's a very strong special education teacher while we have a couple of maternity leaves that we're working through.
And we have identified a few areas that we want to focus on for the 2012-13 school year to continue to enhance our program. In addition to the new instructional coaches that are coming on board, who will both be starting their cognitive coach training this summer. Um, as Jenny alluded to, the coaches will be engaged in four days of training through WMEP on coaching for racial equity. Jim Hawthorne, one of our coaches, will be going to advanced coaching training this summer as the first step towards becoming an agency trainer, which would be an in-house trainer for cognitive coaching. And we are bringing Jim Racine, who did our initial cognitive coaching, bringing him in in September for some training for the coaches, administrators, and TOSA's. And it's training focused on how to make a classroom less teacher-centered, more student-centered, and linking cognitive coaching and Charlotte Danielson's framework for teaching. Um, we will continue as coaches to refine the SLG process and next year's a perfect time as we introduce the enhanced student learning goal or the SLGE for teachers in the fall. Um, and the coaches, through the training that we received this past year, are going to continue to try to meet the needs of teachers by differentiating the coaching that they are able to provide to teachers to help them continue to find ways to make the observation and goal-setting process meaningful and relevant to them as we enter the fifth year of the program. So, any questions?
Libby, how many total coaches now?
There are seven coaches and then as facilitator, I coach the coaches and then have about twenty teachers that I coach.
So that number's been pretty constant, right? When you say two new, it's, it's.
We rotate.
It's just a rotation.
We have a three-year, there's a three-year sort of term of office and then you can reapply if you wish or you can return to the classroom. And um, in this case, Rhonda reapplied and was rehired and Wendaing is new to us this year, this coming year.
Great, thanks.
When we, we're looking at the graphs that show teachers who agreed or strongly agreed with some of the goals of the program. And it looks like over the last couple of years, we've hit about the high seventies, low eighties. Um, and it's sort of not moving up over that. Is that, are, are we, are we saying we're, we're going to do things to get more people to agree with those statements? Or are we just looking at it's, it's a program that not everybody's going to like? And so you're always going to be in that sort of eighty percent range where people are going to say, yeah, this was good for me. And the other twenty percent are just never going to be there? Or are there things we can do to get the other twenty percent there?
Do you have a sense of that?
Um, I, I think, you know, just having, I came in the second year of the program as a coach. And my, the thing that pops into my mind is just there's some people that are slowly warming up to the process. And so, um, I've seen in the people that I've coached for three years or two years, I've seen them um, go from being, you know, I'm here, I'll do this, I'll jump through the hoops to um, inviting me in, as Jenny was saying, to things that are maybe, um, you know, I'm going to take a risk here. Or I'm going to try the student learning goal that maybe is stretching me a little bit more. So I, I feel like that's something that, um, as time goes on, some of those tougher-to-reach teachers, that we can, um, you know, raise it in that sense. I don't know if you have another.
This past year, all of the coaches started working with iPads. And I think one thing that we've been able to do as a result is collect data for teachers in different ways. And that that has helped to um, kind of energize some of those teachers that maybe, you know, weren't so jazzed about the process before, you know, just seeing the different ways that data can be collected. And I think that's where as a coaching group, we are trying to find ways to innovate, to help all the teachers in the district really find this to be a meaningful program.
Thank you.
I, as part of, I, I was part of the evaluation and I think that there is continuous, we're continuing to try to improve the program. And what, I think one of the trends that we'd like to encourage teachers is, is maybe having one evaluation being done by a colleague. And that is one area where we can grow in terms of maybe doing some training of our own teachers to be evaluating each other. That's from what I've observed in our evaluation of our own program.
Well, and one good reason to train an agency trainer is because having that in-house trainer means we can begin to expand the number of people who receive training. And really, it costs us a substitute as opposed to a fee and a substitute. Um, we know that's a way we could use our national board certified teachers. I mean, there are folks that I think as we look at this teacher evaluation piece and meld that together. The other thing I'd call out is that each time we've approved the plan, we've garnered an additional level of support from teachers who are voting. So in that sense, they're apparently gaining some favor with it over time.
I have one other. Go ahead. Can you give us an example of how you feel student learning goals have increased as the program has changed? Now, you've talked about people changing those and making them more realistic or more rigorous. In reality, what does that mean?
I think, looking from first year to second year, we have greater clarity as what, as to what a student learning goal should look like. So, starting with that, um, and then moving towards, in the fall, when teachers are writing student learning goals, we as coaches bring student learning goals back to one another and make sure that we have at least two set of eyes, two sets of eyes that are looking at each goal to ensure that there's some consistency in the rigor across sites and across disciplines. Especially when, you know, with my background being physics and I'm reading an English teacher's goal, I might not know, or if I'm reading a fifth grade teacher's goal, know if this is exactly a real rigorous goal. But I bring it back to the group and there's someone in the group who has the content knowledge that can offer that's, the help that I might need in better coaching a teacher towards writing a better goal. I think teachers are gaining greater insight as to how to write goals and how to write meaningful goals. In the spring, when we meet with teachers in their summative conferences, it's really an opportunity to ask them, what worked, what didn't work, and how might you change this next year? And they are actually the ones who are leading the change in the rigor and the specificity with which they're able to write their goals based upon their experience with the goals.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, and I think, I, I feel like in, in the three years that I've worked with teachers on it too, that they're more accepting or wanting the coaching in terms of their goals. So they have an idea, but then kind of looking to us to give them more insight as to how, you know, we can, um, whether it's reach more students or tighten it up a little bit or just hearing from us in the experience that we have with other teachers, what, what else have you seen, you know, people do or what, how could I, how could I tweak this a little bit? So I see people, I see teachers and staff being more welcoming of that and wanting that kind of, that coaching and that guidance.
One of my concerns about goals and testing and all that stuff is that goals need to be measurable. And so you end up concentrating on things like test scores. Um, are we, are we losing out on the analytical end of things? Do we see that there are goals that have to do with more than, you know, I'm going to, seventy-five percent of my kids get this?
So a couple of things. One, backtracking on the question about rigor is that, um, I, I think another piece of the goal improvement is just the level, go back to your Bloom's training as a gifted resource person. I think the level of intensity in the thinking process is more evident in those goals than it once was. But one of the nice things about this SLGE, so the enhanced learning goal, is essentially saying, you know, we'd like you to create a goal and an assessment process that is devoid of an MCA score, devoid of a MAP score. We'd really like you to create something that relies on assessment that's local and that's developed and useful in your classroom. And I think that helps to think about what evidence should we be looking for that goes beyond a large-scale assessment?
Say, and the survey results, um, the, the comment, the positive comments that you had at the end, I'm curious, what kind of, what, what were the comments that weren't so positive and in general form, say that twenty percent that don't find it to be as useful?
There are the comments that, um, everything from, we would like, we feel like this is hoop jumping and we're good teachers, why do we need to go through this process? To, we would like it to be more evaluative, to comments stating we would like content-specific coaches.
You mean content-specific to their area of discipline?
Specific area. And I will say that the negative comments that came through were, were the same negative comments we've probably received on every survey with the past, of the past few years. So there weren't any surprises within there. Just kind of the general, here's a placed event and so I'm going to tell you what I don't like about the program. I can't not come up with any of the negative ones right off the top of my head.
No, that was what I was looking for. Thanks.
I realize that cognitive coaching is supposed to be, you know, non-evaluative in a sense, that it's coaching. It's not, um, judging so much. What happens to those non-probationary teachers though? Who don't, who have been, you know, maybe observed by a principal, whatever, and who don't implement their plan? I mean, that seems to me to be a little.
There is a piece, Lonnie, that is absolutely, so we, remember, we have not only the, um, student learning goal and the elements of that. And the coaching really is trying to draw out the teacher's work around the targets that they set relative to what we think of as our evaluation indicators. I mean, that's really the crosswalk. And, um, you know, generally speaking, that coaching and that work in the classroom matches and we find the evidence and the teacher knows what it looks like and I know what it looks like and it comes to bear in the conversation. Um, when that doesn't happen, those are the teachers we begin to see who are not receiving their incentive because they've not been able to demonstrate those look fours. And even though we've coached through that process, even though we've tried to draw it from them, it's not yet there. And we're trying to coach then for growth as opposed to, um, you know, sort of building their own efficacy. We're trying to literally do some teaching along the way.
In, in the case where the administrators involved, sort of what's the, what's the, is there a total handoff? Or are you still involved with those teachers or sort of how has that evolved with time?
Um, it, you know, it depends. It's a fairly individualized situation. So what you recognize is that, um, there are teachers every year that are on what we call high cycle, where the principal would have primary involvement if it's a teacher that they believe really requires them to be very closely engaged in the process. Um, generally, they'll base that decision on the results of a three-sixty survey series or other information they might have. Principal will either say, I'm going to be closely involved, or your coach is really going to be the primary resource. You might still want to have a, another peer colleague engaged in the process. And the principal will work with them as part of a team to complete their SAR, their Summit of Appraisal Document. In other cases, the principal will say to the coach on the front end, I'd like that teacher this year. And there's no relationship with the coach really, just like in a non-tenured or probationary teacher setting. In others, um, at some point, there's a handoff either by the coach or the principal will come in and say, you know, at this point, I'd like to take over that teacher. So it's a variety of ways.
Thanks, Jenny. Anybody else?
Would like to thank the board for continuing to support Altcomp and Edina. I think it's been a good process, a good program for our students and our teachers. And, um, I think the community probably would want to know as well that it's benefiting students. And I think that's the, you know, the important point to drive home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our student wellness annual report.
And I'm back again. Joined by Margot Bauch. Margot and I co-chair the Wellness Committee for the district. And we'll be presenting not only the annual report, but we'll speak a little bit about some of the successes that we're finding. Um, the history on this particular report is that, um, some of you will remember because you were on the board, that in two thousand and five and six, we developed a wellness policy, wellness plan. This is relative to student wellness as opposed to staff wellness, which might be more of a, a sort of a downtown initiative, if you will. Um, but looking at not only activities and impacts of that work, we began implementing a policy in two thousand and six and we've been involved in a continuous implementation. So the monitoring requirements are really looking at the food service as well as our wellness work. New and improved this year. Um, we merged the district wellness committee with the nutrition committee. So we had previously had a wellness committee. We'd had a nutrition or a food service committee. And we had some crossover between the two of them. It made better sense for us to merge the two and for us to co-chair. Identified members then in that process such that we have representation from each school building and administration as well. Um, we've had an interesting group of parents. They've been a point of contact as well for a community-based group, um, not appointed by the school district to have had a focus on school lunch choices. So we've had some robust conversation around school lunch choices. And as a result of that conversation, we generated some survey questions for inclusion in our annual satisfaction survey for families. Um, asked them some questions about things like, do you know where to locate the school lunch menus? Do you know what the nutritional specifics are? Um, do you know that school lunch menus contain a hundred percent juice when juice is offered? Um, talk about fresh fruits and vegetables and their knowledge about that sort of thing. And the percentage of, the food that we have is largely made on-site, which many people don't recognize and is very different than in some food service settings. We've been supported by community partnerships, a couple of them that I'll call out. One of them is Safe Routes to School, which certainly fits with this notion of student wellness and activity. It's a collaboration with the city, trying to work to ensure safety for schools regarding not only sidewalks, but drop-off locations. We recently collected information about how many students in a given couple of days in May both walked or rode their bikes to school, so that we can help the city actually apply for some funding that might assist them in getting access to some bike lanes. So our increase in the number of kids who are walking and biking to school, and also just recognizing that having bike racks is one of the ways that we encourage people to do that. Dewtown is something you've heard a bit about. It's a collaboration among the cities of Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. Blue Cross Blue Shield has been sort of a provider, if you will, of support services for that. And literally, their theory is to try to make the healthy choice, the easy choice. Nutritional guidelines are such that we continue to try to improve the products that are offered in the school district to meet healthy eating guidelines for all food groups. Guidance and input from the Wellness Committee, so we see the continued increase in offering whole grain products, fruits and vegetables, dairy products, meat, fish, beans, eggs, a variety of proteins, change up our snacks and our beverages as well. And one of the things we've been doing this year is comparing the menus in Edina schools to those of a district or two where they've had some specific grant dollars to really focus on some healthy upgrades. So that's been a healthy conversation as well. Relative to some site-specific work, certainly continuing to communicate these things to staff and families. Each of the school locations is offering physical activity kinds of opportunities before or after school for students that are sort of drop-in. Elementary recesses are now all occurring before lunch, and that's been sort of a long time coming for some folks. You may know that there's some pretty good data that suggests that if kids have recess before they eat lunch, they actually do a better job eating their lunch, not only from a completion standpoint, but a choices standpoint, which makes some sense if you think about the impact of activity on perhaps what you choose to eat. And then also recognizing that the national health guidelines and standards are continuing to be implemented. My Plate has replaced the old pyramid in our content work. Student fitness and wellness work is sort of throughout the school day, throughout the school district. And the food service has been supporting that work in a variety of ways, not only in in-class instruction, but also as an example, supporting some of the activities at elementary buildings and middle school lunchtime.
Good evening. Some of our wellness plan successes this year, we had an increase in students eating nutritious breakfast before school, and that increased overall by 5%. And you can see, we have a four-year history here, broken out by school area. A significant increase in Cornelia and Valley View, some fluctuation in some other areas, but overall. We do have an increase in breakfast participation when we serve French toast sticks, but we cannot serve them every day.
That's what Rick likes.
Maybe that's why it increases. Another goal of ours was to increase purchases of combo meals with fruit and vegetables in the secondary schools, which are healthier, have healthier choices in them than à la carte purchases, and also have educational signage and new menu items to contribute to that change. Also selling fresh baked cookies on a limited basis, and also taking a look at then raising the price on the cookies, but dropping the price on the fruits. And all in all, making these several changes, fewer cookies were sold, more fruit, but no impact to the overall à la carte program. And what's up next, changes to the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. We talked about this, or I talked about this a little bit at the May meeting, when we talked about the food service, lunch price increases and the renewal of the contract, that there's a combination of funding changes on the revenue side due to this act, but there's also changes coming on the, how we serve the food, what types of food we serve, increased food costs, and one of those, or a couple of those are listed here, that we must increase fruits, vegetables, and whole grains, while limiting sodium and calories in the meals. And students this upcoming year will have to select a fruit or vegetable. Some of these changes will come gradually over the next few years, and it also expands out-of-school time access to meals for after-school programs. And we want to thank our committee members, those that are listed here, for their participation. They're a very active group, as Jenny talked about. And I do believe it was a positive change this year to combine the student wellness with the Food Service Nutrition Committee, because we are talking about the overall wellness of the students. Any questions?
The elementary recess before lunch, I think actually, isn't that only going on in one of our elementary schools?
I think I understood that at this point, they've been able to run it in almost all, I think all the schools this year ran it, was what I understood.
No, Highlands is not doing recess before lunch, it's after lunch.
Okay, thanks for the correction. I understood that they had moved there.
Okay. Because I think it's a great idea. I actually support and wish that Highlands would do that, because I think your point is exactly right. Let them run, burn off their energy, and come and actually eat. Because what you see in the lunchroom, particularly the younger the student, is they don't eat very much, and they try to get out to recess quicker, so they have more recess time, less lunchtime.
And that's no surprise to anyone who's ever met a student.
Amen.
Additional questions or comments?
You know, I want to extend our thanks to Sodexo and Mary Lombardi. Mary's out in the audience and often attends board meetings, but their commitment to serving our community and serving our students has been unbelievable, and really been a champion and a leader in some of the changes occurring. And we feel very fortunate partner with Sodexo and the team that they have here with Edina Public Schools. So thank you, Mary.
Additional questions or comments? Thank you both. On the budget?
Good evening. So as I was listening to Creek Valley students, I was thinking, I neglected one part of my budget preparation, and that should have been to contact the Creek Valley students and ask them for a little jingle to lead in to the budget presentation. Could have picked a theme song for the 1213 budget.
You would also need a mascot.
I'm not quite sure what that mascot would be. So, we are here tonight to discuss the 1213 preliminary budget. I want to thank everybody involved from the board, and the community, and the staff for about over six months' worth of work to prepare this information, some of it at a larger, bigger-picture level, some at a very detailed level. And also thank the business office staff for their assistance in the preparation of all the information you're about to receive. The, this particular budget presentation does include additional information from what you've received in the past, and I'll go through some of that information so that you can see it. Some of it is narrative and graphic, some is detailed, so that a variety of users can find what they need in hopefully a format that's useful to them. We will have the information out on the website, hopefully by the end of the week, maybe even tomorrow, but we'll get it out on the website for everybody. Tonight, we'll discuss the calendar and process review, the funding history and the assumptions, go over some budget graphs, and then some next steps. All this information has been reviewed by Finance and Facilities Committee at our last meeting a week and a half ago, and thank you to the Finance and Facilities Committee for their time and review of that. I won't spend a lot of detailed time on the budget calendar, but the process does start in January, actually in December, when we approve the final budget and updating long-range plan. And we've had several steps along the way and updates along the way here. Most recently, our spring budget adjustments in May, and the board is required to approve a budget for the upcoming school year by June 30th of each year. Couple of refinements that we had, we refined the capital project approval calendar in order to get a jump on the bidding environment and plan for our summer projects, which are up and running right now. We also modified some staffing and supply and equipment allocations to be based on average daily membership and also custodial supply allocations, and, which is a change from previous years. Here's a chart just to highlight state funding history on the net basic formula compared to Consumer Price Index. We have received a 1% increase in funding for the 1213 year, and that'll be discussed in budget assumptions. This is a history of our enrollment, our average daily membership, K-12, it doesn't include pre-K, and projection for five years. Depending on the given years, the five-year projection ranges between 0 and 1%. So we are slow, steady-growing, but not at as fast of a rate as we were two, three, four years ago. But for 1213, it's about a 1% increase in enrollment in the budget assumptions, and then a 1% increase in the basic formula. Also new this year that was added in the legislative session is the Literacy Incentive Aid. Those dollars can be spent in a variety of ways. Part of our budget adjustment process, we certainly considered the Literacy Incentive Aid in that process. We also, in further along in the presentation, have some one-time enhancements that would qualify for the Literacy Incentive Aid. So that information is included in the overall budget calculations that we'll go over. On the expenditure assumptions, certainly staffing adjustments for average daily membership, supply allocation increases. We did talk about initially, six months ago, because of what was occurring in the legislative session and changes, that we would need to increase our cash flow borrowing, which we did this year, so there, even though we received a very reasonable rate on the borrowing, there is increase in borrowing expenses. We do have the technology levy that passed last fall, that is now in the general fund. So that's on the revenue side and also on the expenditure side, and you'll see that. Some of those are new dollars, new spending dollars, and some of those are taking existing technology expenditures that we did have in the general fund in capital, that had been paid for for a number of years, and continuing those on, so we didn't have to make reductions in those areas. Workers' compensation, insurances, staffing, lane changes, that kind of thing. We'll be discussing workers' comp later in the agenda tonight, special ed, transportation, and the enhancements. A narrative of these assumptions can be found, I believe, on, let's see, page five of the executive summary. So just for a reference there, this, I tried to summarize it here on the PowerPoint, but you can also find it on the narrative. Here's the budget enhancement requests that we have added in at this time, or are recommending be added in. Lead team has reviewed these requests. Part of the budget process, program directors and administrators can submit enhancement requests. Lead team reviews them, and then we bring them forward for the board to review. These are not all the requests. We do have some requests pending and waiting until September, till we see what enrollment actually does when the kids come back through the doors in the fall, and may bring those back to you for fall budget adjustments. But these are, the majority are one-time, some staffing items, a strategic plan would be for further areas of study, school site staffing, again, based on average daily membership. Rick, did you have?
Well, I'd just support those enhancement requests. Again, this helps us balance our budget out. A lot of that funding came as a result of the literacy funds from the state. The 1.2 in staffing is at the elementary level, and that will help support this literacy intervention effort. And so that's why a lot of those funds, and then we have the one-time relates to district initiatives, that'll be defined further at the July meeting. The kindergarten scholarships and the readiness scholarships too, again, help that reading by third grade. So these recommendations really do support the literacy work where a lot of this revenue source came from.
Thank you. Also included, as I mentioned, is the technology levy dollars and also the expenditures of those funds. This is just a more detailed graph that Steve Butner's put together in terms of how the original levy dollars are technology spending, how that's broken out, and how the new spending then is broken out in terms of hardware, staffing, training, repayment, that kind of thing, for your reference. You will see it in the financial statement, you just won't see it broken out in such nice detail, so I wanted you to have that for your reference. The next few slides are just a review and for your reference on the definitions of the new fund balances that were, fund balance definitions that were approved and required to be changed last year, and you as a board, updated the board policy on fund balances, and what those definitions mean, because that's still relatively new. In the narrative and the financial statements, we have summary of funds between general funds, special revenue funds, which isn't special education, it is the combination of food service and community service, debt service and capital projects, and the majority of those financial sections are broken out into revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. And for now, I'm gonna leave the PowerPoint presentation and go to the, those documents. They are in your board packet. They were, it was a PDF, about 80, a lot of pages. I do not see it here. This is not it. Do all of you have yours? Okay, then I will speak from that. I don't have it on mine.
Which document are we going to?
Starts at like page 140 of your board book.
Thank you.
It's right after the motion to approve the budget.
Thank you.
In that document, there is a table of contents. I'm not sure what page it will be for you. And I'll just briefly go what it does include. That'll give you a little time to navigate and find it. And I apologize for not having it here on the screen for you. Introduction, there's an introductory section which includes an executive summary. Again, this is just a quick narrative, has some graphics, what changed from this year to last year. If somebody wants just a quick overview of the financial position of the district, then that is what you would refer to. If you want, if you're a person that wants to get a little bit more detailed, you'd go to the financial section, which has a summary of all the various funds. It also includes a four-year history of previous years and fund balance comparisons. There's an organizational section which reviews the district strategic roadmap and budgeting policies and processes. And then the informational section is much more detailed. That's, and you're used to getting some of those sheets directly from our finance system, code by code, in a summary format that is a little bit more detailed than the other statements, and doesn't include quite as much history. The executive summary, are you all able to find it on your laptops? Okay. I would point out on page four, there's some, just some graphics on where we receive our revenues for all funds and expenditures for all funds. And then there's individual detail on it for the individual funds. Again, page five shows the information that I talked about in the PowerPoint in terms of where are revenues in the general fund, how they changed, and how the expenditures changed. What I will point out in the chart where it shows the increase in revenues from 1112 and the increase in expenditures, on the increase in expenditures, because we've had the technology levy pass and roll into the general fund on both the revenue and expense side, I backed out the new spending dollars for technology and the expenditures, and without that, the expenditure increase would be about 2.8%, just for your point to reference. We had a conversation about that at Finance and Facilities Committee. And those general fund expenditures then are highlighted, as I talked about. And then the narrative also then goes through the special revenue funds and the debt service funds with food service and community service and our capital projects. Then what I'll switch to is, it would be page 14 and 15 of the budget document. It, these two pages really include the best overall financial summary for the 1213 budget. They have the same information, but sorted in a different way. One focuses more on the different types of fund balances and summarizes revenue and expenses. One focuses more on the different types of fund balances and summarizes revenue and expenditures. The other one summarizes revenue and expenditures a little more detailed and then, but summarizes the fund balances in a different way. So if you turn to page or go to page 14, overall, you see our estimated June 30th, 2012 fund balance, which you as a board approved the updated 1112 budget in May. So that reflects those changes, we still have the audit to go through. We have budgeted revenues and expenditures and then projected June 30th, 2013, fund balances. Along the left-hand side of that report, you can see the various fund balance categories. Again, the definitions are in the PowerPoint for you to refer to. Just a reminder that the restricted fund balances are state determined, you as a board have committed 2% of the fund balance and committed the federal job Z dollars. And then the unassigned fund balance is what we tend to focus on in terms of the dollars that you as a board have the most availability to spend the dollars in the various programs and in alignment with the strategic plan for student programming. In that area, the the unassigned general fund balance then would be just a little over 7.5 million, which is just about one month's worth of expenditures or about 8%. The minimum requirement there, according to board policy, is 6%. Some major changes I would point out in terms of the the visual and where this looks, you can see the capital technology here levy here in detail. The prior capital technology levy is in the building fund. We also have the food service funds, the community service, debt service and internal service fund. Then page 15, again, is the same, question Randy?
Can you touch on the required transfers? There's a big transfer out of unassigned general?
Yes. So all those transfers, net zero dollars, they're between the reserve, typically between the restricted or the assigned areas and either add dollars into the unassigned or take away from. So for an example, under the restricted area, for example, safe schools or gifted and talented, the state allocates dollars per student for those funds, but typically districts do spend more as part of their strategic plans that they have because the state dollars weren't intended to fully fund those programs. And so what happens is it's part of an overall strategic plan to spend unassigned dollars on those programs, according to the priorities in any given budget year. So it just shows that it's a shift from, you see some positive numbers up above in that column, and then and then it takes it out of the general fund unassigned for a net impact on the general fund of zero.
Okay.
Does that help? Other questions before I move on to page 15, and I will move a little quicker through Page 15, again, is very similar information, just sorted in a different way. Both good, really good references for one-page summary on the financial position of the district. This one is broken into the three sections I talked to, revenues, expenditures. Expenditures in this particular case are broken out what we call by program area, and those definitions are on page 28, for your reference, so you know what is and is included in there. And then the funds are across the top, and the bottom third or section is fund balances in summary. Again, if you want detail on fund balances, you need to refer to page 14. But if you want more detail on the revenue and expenses, this is a good page to look The following pages then have graphic analysis and historical analysis for the various funds. I'll go specifically through the general fund and then answer any questions on other Page 17 shows a programming chart, expenditures by program, based on average daily membership. And the detailed information for that is on page 18. All of these charts then have the prior, four years of prior year history, the increase or decrease over 1112. And you can see some variations in revenue and expenditures, and there's a combination of things going on in the general fund, some of which I've explained in the assumptions. However, now you can see financially the impact when you compare one year against another. Again, most notably, the passage of the technology levy has an impact on the revenues and expenditures. For example, under revenues and federal sources, our federal revenue goes down, but that's because the federal job Z dollars were one-time dollars. And so we no longer will receive those, we are saving them, but we will not receive them in 1213. So those are just a couple of examples. We did have a decline in other local revenue due to some one-time adjustments in 1112 for local time study collaborative dollars and also intermediate 287 special ed dollars that we talked about in May with the 1112 budget adjustments. Also, in the expenditures, I do want to point out, you see a reduction in expenditures under instructional support services and an increase in expenditures in site building and equipment. This is due to now that there's a technology levy in the general fund, there's specific state coding for that. And where we were coding some of the technology expenditures in the past that were not funded by the levy was under instructional support services. So it's merely just a adjustment in coding between the two areas or combination of areas. The next page is very similar for the general fund, just sorts the expenditures in a different way. This one sorts them by salaries and benefits and supplies, for reference. Special revenue funds then is food, shows the details for food service and the history and also community services. And then there's also follow-up reports for debt service and capital projects and intern- Combination of graphs here on sources of revenue and expenditures that are also included in the report, I won't go through them in detail. We do, we are service-driven for students, so the majority of our expenditures are on staffing and as you would expect, then are also on direct instructional staff. One item to note here is in the general fund expenditure by program, the combination of instruction for regular instruction, special ed and pupil support is 80%. The majority of our money is going to instruct, direct instruction or instructional types of pupil support, and that's really good. So what does this all mean and where are we going and where are we headed? That's usually the next question after I've presented the budget. So here's the historical fund balance chart, and the green line is the base plan in February 2012, when we talked about using literacy aid or receiving literacy aid and then also having about a half a million in budget adjustments. So that was what things looked like in February. And now with the updated 1112 budget that you approved in May, which because of a good winter and we also had a combination, the one-time special ed and a local time study collaborative dollars, less retirees than anticipated, 1112 turned out slightly better than anticipated, and so that carries forward for 1213. You can see then the red line of where this preliminary budget takes us. Now, estimating forward to 1314, we have some one-time dollars in using up job Z dollars. And now the technology plan is already implemented on an annual basis for the next 10 years. You can see that that trajectory will change a little bit. We do try to target being around that middle dotted line, I think it's a blue. And so at the budget time, you know, next December, January, February, we'll need to look at where that that line is and how close it is to that that middle line and make adjustments accordingly. This is just a kind of a update at this point in time, it's not a time to make decisions about the long-range plan yet, because we will want, first of all, to start school and see how many students we do have here, the audit to get done and develop the final budget for 1213, to use all of that as a resource then for developing the long-range plan to make a decision to start our budget process for 1314 in December and January. Just some reference on why you need to make, we need to maintain fund balance. And as I referred to, the next steps would be, obviously, we've, I've updated the long-range plan, because I just shared that information with you. We do start working right away now in July, getting data into the state for the proposed levy certification, which funds our 1314 year, and will come to you preliminarily in September and for final in December. Audit report will come in October, final budget approval in December, and then, as I talked about, update the long-range plan in January. So with keeping up with the long-range plan and maintaining maintaining good internal systems, communicating with our community and our legislature regarding the schools' finances and the state's finances, balancing our budget and providing increased public information on our finances, we'll keep moving in, keep moving in a positive direction and using our resources to educate our students. Any questions? Now's when I need the little jingle from Creek Valley.
Thank you for breaking it out so many different ways, by program, by code.
That's very helpful.
That was very helpful to take different, different approaches to it. It made it, although there was more stuff to go through, it made it more comprehensible.
You're welcome, thank you. I know it's a lot to go through, so please feel free to email me or give me a call if there's something, even a few months from now, that you're looking at and saying, hmm, why does that look that way, or I have a question about that, please feel free to email. And again, it'll be out on our website.
And this was, going back to the Berg process, back in 2011 or 2010, 11, the request was for more data to be shared so the public have a better understanding and a handle on how the funding works, and I think this is a response to that and that we thank Margot and her team for putting it together, and that will be a live document. It'll be available to the public and staff to help them understand how we are using the resources and the challenges related to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margot.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. Get a motion, please.
Moved second.
Moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda.
I have one point of order in the consent agenda. The student teaching agreement with the University of St. Thomas is missing a background, criminal background check that we require in all those sorts of agreements. And I believe that Dr. Jenny Norlin Weaver will take care of that as one of her last formal duties.
We'll add it in, and the young person who's been engaged in it, and I've been in conversation about coming in to do the background checks, so I think it's just an oversight on the part of the university.
We'll just take that as a friendly amendment without a form, no formal amendment needed. Rick, if you want to walk us through?
Just the personnel recommendations, again, we have a numerous personnel recommendations because it's a tiring time in the district, and we're excited about the candidates we are bringing forward. Board will be, have an opportunity to meet them in August, as will the staff, students and parents. We have the expenditures, the payable. Again, we have student teaching agreements with St. Thomas, and we will make that change. Also, Minnesota State of Moorhead, we have commendations, and then once again, the gifts from our community and different groups that support our schools. And that would conclude the consent agenda items for tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we are on to the action portion of tonight's meeting. The first item is the 201213 budget, which we just saw in the presentation. Get a motion, please.
Moved second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion around the budget? Motion? Excuse me?
We just did the motion.
No, no, I understand, but we have to prove it.
Right.
Yep. Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on tonight's agenda is new policy 812, buildings and sites, health and safety. We've seen this before, any, can I have a motion, please?
So moved second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of approving new policy 812, buildings and sites, health and safety, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the health and safety budget. Can I get a motion, please?
So second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the health and safety budget. Any discussion or questions?
This does align then with the policy that we just previously approved, and for the viewing audience, we did, are putting some of these slides up just so they can also view it, but does give an overview of the health and safety budget and the various areas that we address through the funding process.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the health and safety budget, a motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up, we have the 1112 integration budget amended.
Moved second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
This is just some minor changes in our current budget that we had needed to balance out. Again, Mary Manfield coordinates this effort, does a wonderful job and has made those corrections with the state, but the board does need to take formal action with this.
Discussion, seeing then, all those in favor of approving the 1112 integration budget amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the revised strategic plan. Get a motion, please.
Moved second.
Moved and seconded to approve the revised strategic plan, which we've had a series of discussions around. Any additional comments or questions? Rick, you want to?
Just remind the board and the community, again, this was a journey that began in January of 2011 and just gradually picked up steam throughout. We've got just awful lot of good input and data from administration, staff, parents, community members, students, and we're ready to move on it. Once the board approves it, we'll formally move into action with our delivery beginning in August. It'll be a busy summer getting us ready. The vision statement, again, is our shift to not only nationally but internationally, we'll start rolling that out. We really are looking at that full learning experience, so not just the academic world, but just all areas of life, to make sure that student is ready for both 21st and 22nd century. We have seven different strategic areas that we'll be addressing as far as initiatives, creating a comprehensive personalized learning system. This is something we've been working on over the past three or four years, and we're going to continue to move in that direction, providing more early education opportunities, using the power of technology to advance learning, and we've been very thankful to have some funding to support that at a very high level. Our elementary programming will continue to grow, secondary programming as well, looking at options around that, growing our partnership and communication efforts, and we're pleased to have a communication director who'll be joining us July 1, which will help really fast-forward those efforts. And finally, the power of team, and just how we continue to grow our teaming efforts both internally and externally around effectiveness and accountability and support. Some of those key strategies around closing the gap, taking a look at a school calendar that's more reflective of how learning occurs today. Again, the personalized learning device and how we bridge that as we see students more and more recognize and benefit from them bringing their own personal learning devices to school. Technology, or transportation will continue to be something we monitor, as well as how we grow the partnership between the school district and community ed. We have three major studies that we'll be bringing back to the board for action. The first will be focused on secondary learning, which will be secondary schedules and requirements, as well as ninth grade learning options. The second study will focus on elementary choice and the third around facilities. These will frame those studies. We expect the majority of those, two to three studies, to be completing their work in December. The facility study would be completing its work in March, which is a series of recommendation for implementation as early as fall 2013. We have a series of goals that shift from tactical to strategic to trending. All of this is about alignment, aligning our resources, our staff, our training to the work of our strategic plan. It's been a long time focus of our school district, and we continue to support that. It's been a long time focus of our school district and we continue to support that going forward. With that, the administration would thank the board for their work with this. We also want to thank Dennis Cheeseborough and Teamworks International for their efforts in overseeing some of this work and ask the board to support this strategic plan.
Thank you, Rick. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the revised strategic plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the alternative compensation annual report. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved second.
Moved and seconded to approve the alternative compensation annual report. We had a presentation earlier this evening. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the twelve fourteen guidebook for professional employment for community education services coordinators of Edina Public Schools. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved second.
It's been moved and seconded.
These items did have some, have some minor revisions that were requested at the board HR meeting on Friday morning. Any discussion?
Didn't these fall within the parameters that were established by the board and the budget? Val Burke and Gwen Jackson both coordinated these efforts. I don't know if there's further comments.
The HR board discussion had the, given the rest of the.
We're good to go.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the service coordinators, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the twelve fourteen guidebook for professional employment for community education services, employees of Edina Public Schools. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, superintendent's performance goal pay. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved second.
Moved and seconded. This was discussed at the HR meeting on Friday morning. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Did we, did we get a report other than it said we'd be getting something?
The committee needs to make a recommendation.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
The committee needs to make a recommendation on level of full or partial.
Okay.
So what is it we're actually voting on now?
Right.
Yeah, we didn't get a, we didn't get a recommendation. It just said you guys would be meeting and bringing us a recommendation.
Yeah.
Oh, we approved the compensation, the additional performance pay in full.
So what is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. It didn't get inserted here.
It's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. So the, it was supported at the HR meeting. We had a nice discussion.
Should change the background information.
Okay, so that would be the recommendation of the HR committee after their discussion is to award the entire amount.
Correct.
Of twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay.
So move to amend to insert wording of the full amount, twenty-five hundred dollars, into the motion.
Thank you.
Sorry for the oversight. Can I get a motion to amend?
I moved second.
Moved and second to amend. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify saying aye and that this motion is to amend it.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to amend is approved. Back to the original motion. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is passed. Thank you, Dr. Dresden, for all your efforts this year. Next up, we have the IEA contract renewal for two thousand twelve thirteen. Get a motion?
Moved second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Little background, Margot.
This is our annual contract with IEA. They help us assist the district in compliance with health and safety requirements. They can just approve the board policy and the budget, new regulations. They do audits and investigations if we have any issues in our building, and they also do a significant amount of employee training. The scope of the contract is the same and there is no increase, so I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Margot. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the IEA contract renewal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up, we have workers' compensation insurance. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved second.
Been moved and seconded. Margot, quite an increase here. Can you walk us through, please?
Sure. We had fifteen companies that were solicited. Eight of them responded that they just are not, they don't do only just workers' comp. They're not monoline. And four responded that they couldn't be competitive with pricing. So of the three, you can see that information. They represent a twenty-seven percent to seventy-one percent increase. The majority of the reason for that increase right now is truly an increase in market conditions, and we're hearing that from other school districts. Other things that impact the increase are the, are, are claims and also increases in salaries, but though neither of those changes from one year to the other constitute that kind, kind of increase this year. It truly is market borne. So Finance and Facilities Committee did have a lengthy discussion about it because our original intent in our conversations a year ago was to try to align this to the property liability renewal of January one and in an effort to try to combine possibly both renewals and possibly be more competitive in pricing and have at least that option for a choice as an award. We are not able to award for six months or eighteen months. So in light of this significant increase and with the information that the market probably isn't going to change significantly in six months, Finance Committee and Administration and, and our insurance agent believe it's best to go for twelve months with RAS, Risk Administration Services, and then review the market at that time and try to delay the implementation to January one for another year and see what the market is like if we would be able to do that. Risk Administration Services has been with Duluth Schools for about three years and has positive reviews, so I would request approval.
Thank you, Margot. Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is supportive purchase for products containing only conflict-free materials. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This was a resolution that was brought forward by Student Group Stand. They're an advocacy group around equity issues that not only involve students, but just take on a global presence. This is one that they met with the policy committee probably since, probably first part of the year, yeah, and really have been an advocate of just really saying, what can we do to eliminate the conflict, the usage of conflict minerals? It's a similar resolution was passed by City of Edina, and it's just our commitment to really trying to be stewards of, of our, of our, our world, and this is an effort to do this. There are several colleges and universities who are following suit as well, just trying to put some pressures on companies that are avoiding that and being aware of that as people who use or who rely on these type of services and products, that we continue to monitor that. We will do that from an administrative standpoint, and this is the commitment we have to that effort.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, purchase of network hardware, video conferencing equipment, wireless network gear, and security software. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved second.
Moved and seconded. Steve, could you provide us some background, please?
Certainly. Good evening, board. As part of our refresh with the technology levy and also just our long-range technology plan, the need to upgrade our infrastructure, in particular, our core networking, so how we get on the internet and how our computers talk back and forth to each other is necessary. Our technology is over six years old and we are planning on upgrading about a third of our district this summer. In conversations with our partners, in particular Cisco and CDW, they came back with this quote, and it's a great opportunity. Let me just walk you through some of the benefits of it. One is it allows us to accelerate our implementation of a core upgrade, going from a hundred megabits or gigabit to ten gigabits, so it's a ten-fold increase. It doesn't seem like a lot, but in the world of increasing video and multimedia, this provides us the highway for multimedia-rich content to come back and forth to the schools. We are going to do that in three of our buildings. This allows us to do it in all of our buildings, so there's an issue of equity being addressed and just leveraging a job that we're going to do. We're going to add a hundred and ten wireless access points, so as you saw in my last presentation to the board, our wireless use is exploding. This allows us to put sixty percent more access points into our network, which will provide, unfortunately, probably won't provide us all the coverage we need, but it will, again, help us address that. As we do, as we allow more and more of our staff and our community to access our network, we just need to be cautious about security. This will allow us to put some tools in place so that we'd be able to monitor, but yet provide our guests quick and easy access, so it's not obtrusive. Finally, we're looking at providing additional video conferencing capabilities throughout the district, so this really addresses a number of our key initiatives. The list price for this is over one point two million dollars. Through this one-time opportunity, the price is down to five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, or five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and they're providing zero percent financing over five years. And so it's a, over a fifty percent savings on the equipment and allows us to implement it now and take advantage of stuff that we are going to be putting in over the next four or five years.
Kathy?
That sounds like such a great deal that I have to say, what's the catch? I mean, why are they giving it to us at such a discount and letting us finance it for free for five years? Just because they like schools?
Well, so I, I think what they're seeing is, they're seeing the technology exploding in video and in BYOD, so bring your own device. And so, and they recognize, I think, Edina is kind of out in the front on bring your own device, so they're very interested in partnering with us to make sure that that's a success, so I think that's one of the pieces of it. And I believe what they feel like is that we should be doing it right. And so the original plan was that we would implement this over five years, and what would have happened with that would have allowed, we would have probably been able to implement it over five years, but there would have been additional implementation costs and things like that. So they're just helping us kind of do it one time with a big amount of money for them, but at the same time, saving us money over the time. So we would have dribbled it out over five years, probably not spent as much over those five years, so they're gonna, they're getting one big check and we're getting it done properly.
They have identified, Cisco has identified about three or four different sites in the state of Minnesota that they want to support the initiatives, one up in the Grand Rapids area, another in the metro here in the, in Edina. So, I mean, they had targeted areas and we've had ongoing conversation. We've had involvement with Cisco going back many, many years to our first technology referendum, so I think we've had a strong partnership. We've had involvement with Cisco in developing our visioning plan, so I think they knew where we were going with this, so we had representatives. And so I think there are a lot of reasons, but I do think the strength of our plan and the capacity we have around funding, that they knew we could make this deliverable and make it possible.
Thank you.
Say, Steve, when we get all this implemented, is this going to add or eliminate any of your staffing needs? And if so, are they going to provide any additional training for your staff for some of these new products that we'll be implementing? And, you know, how, how will that, how will the support part of the five-year warranty be? Is it, is it just support, like you can call us and we'll tell you what part is broken, but you've got to deal with it? Or are they going to come in and physically help you deal with all this new equipment?
That's a great question, and, and there is another resolution of our annual maintenance agreement with Cisco. But in short, what this allows us to do is it gives us a technical support number where we can call. In the business, it's a one-eight-hundred number where we get response and they track our issues. They're able to virtually come on our network and work with us to resolve the problems. Provides us the critical software upgrades and patches for this technology. Not only that, but as technology versions change, we get access to those versions. So just like in the Microsoft world or the Macintosh world, when an operating system upgrades, this will provide us software assurance, so we get those updates. And then finally, which I think is the most critical, is if one of these pieces of hardware actually fails, there's next-day delivery of a new device. And so it allows us to get a new device in our house within twenty-four hours. And as you know, as Steve Westerlin, my network, our network manager said, it used to be where email could go down for a day, that can't happen any longer. And so this will allow us really a twenty-four-seven robust wireless and network that's up hopefully all the time, Demeter SLA.
And will they help you with any training?
Yes, they will, and that is training and implementation as well.
Great.
And, and sort of a, a portion of that question is this summer for deployment, are we going to need additional staffing to make this work right?
That's a great question, and so what we are, I've tasked the network manager to look at our priorities and ensure that we can get the technology in and prioritize this. I believe what we're going to do is we're going to continue to implement the core network upgrade, and then what we're going to do is staged throughout the school year at times when there's no students in sessions to upgrade our core networking in the buildings and really concentrate on getting the wireless in, because that seems to be a hotspot. So we probably won't be able to implement all this technology by the start of the school, but we will be implementing it through the beginning of the school year, prioritizing wireless and our core networking upgrade first.
And what's your goal at this point? End of the year? End of the calendar year? What's your target?
Yes. Our, our hope is that by the Thanksgiving break, that the core network has been upgraded and the wireless is completely upgraded and our security software is in place. The video conferencing technology, it's high-definition video conferencing, we'll be working closely with the teaching and learning department and with the schools to really talk about how do we bring in a world of opportunities using video conferencing and how do we leverage partners such as post-secondary K through Oregon universities and then other school districts in the Twin Cities, so to bring those opportunities that we won't necessarily find within our classrooms into our classrooms.
Where will those four HD video conferencing systems actually be located?
That's a great question. What we do is we, we understand we need to be equitable in our distribution, and thankfully, they're portable systems, and so what we hope to do is start working, and we've already scheduled with our secondary schools, a opportunity to meet with the leadership and start discussing how we're going to implement those. And then I also want to keep a couple for the elementary school as well. And so what we'll do is we'll start working with the groups that are ready to implement this technology and using those as best practices and demonstration sites to gear in a level of excitement and a level of use of this technology. And because they're mobile, we'll be able to roll those around to other schools as the need arises. Okay.
Do you have a sense of what the cost would be if we were to put them in all buildings?
I do.
Is that a major expense in the future or?
Yes, it is about, there'd be about another hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put it in the other schools.
Total, not, not per se, total.
Right. Total, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Additional questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. Steve, you referenced at the beginning of the presentation that our current system is about six years old, and is that the approximate life expectancy for the new conferencing system, or is it possible to tell?
So this is for the, our core networking. Our video conferencing gear is also about that age, and that is all obsolete gear. It's dying right now, and we still do use the video conferencing gear. It's being used for a multitude of reasons, not only virtual classrooms, but also to assist special services. So we actually have some students that are homebound that are utilizing this technology to video conference with their teachers. All that technology is no end of life, and so this will help us replace those as well. Life of video conferencing, I would say, is about three to four years, and so I'm not quite sure at the rapid pace of technological change to say that it will last five years.
Additional discussion? Thank you, Steve. Great opportunity here. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next. Next, like to combine? Can I go, Kathy?
Sure. Should we move to combine items N, O, P, Q, R, S? And doesn't T, the project Lead the Way, doesn't that come out of the technology budget as well?
That is correct.
So we can combine T as well. So N through T, I move that we combine those items.
Okay, we got a, we got, we got a motion and a second to combine the purchase of video distribution system with the purchase of Google Chromebooks, with the purchase of Apple computers, iPads, and televisions, with the purchases of Lenovo all-in-one computers, with the purchase of a service contract for voice, video, and data network hardware, with the purchase of subscription to Microsoft Enrollment for Education Solutions, with the purchase of supplies for Project Lead the Way. And we do have a second. All those in favor of combining those items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Steve, you're on.
So, this is, this is an exciting time, I think, for the district with having some additional resources. Let me just kind of give you a 20,000-foot overview on each of these, these action items. The first one is, we have a video distribution system. It has served the district very well. It is a product called V-Bric. But again, technological changes move forward. We work very closely with teachers, the teaching and learning department, and our technology group to identify really what are our needs for video distribution going forward. Particular, the need for our teachers to be able to quickly create content, upload it and share it, not only within our network, but across the internet. The ability to have this video and this technology hit not only our PC computers, but tablets and the rapid-evolving devices, personal devices. We looked at all of our devices and what we came up on with a product what's called Safari Montage. It is a product that is created by a company that exclusively works in the K-12 environment, so they get our needs. It is a product that is a great foundation and that we hope to move forward with it going forward. This fall, we'll begin using this, this system for our flipped learning, so our e-academy and our teacher-created content, as well as migrating content in there that our teachers can use and share with the students. And so it will be used both within our district and at home as well, so parents and students can access the content at home. Our challenge was to try, to try to find something as easy to use as YouTube, but that had security on it. And so this is our, our great first step. We feel it's a great foundation moving forward. We are not taking away V-Bric or United Streaming, which is our video content, but we are evaluating those as the year comes by, because this product can serve that foundation and then we can start using this going forward.
Thanks, Steve. Next one?
The next one is the Google Chromebooks. So I wanted to just remind you that part of our technology plan, strategic plan, was to develop a district standard for classrooms on digital devices, and that's product, that project has gone very well. But we also wanted to provide options for our teachers. To do that, we created a project called iSquared, and that iSquared had an incredible success, phenomenally. We had over 260 applications for iSquared, and we increased the budget in order to, to be able to provide as many of our teachers a iSquared application. The Google Chromebooks and the iPads really are, are the result of that iSquared. And what they will do is provide access for our students in the form of Chromebooks, five packs per teacher, usually grouped amongst grade level. So that's that student access, or iPads for our classroom teachers and sets, as well as interactivity for our teachers in the Apple TV. So we are really excited about the fact is that more and more, our technology will allow us to transmit content wirelessly to our projection systems. Also, in the Apple order is, we will start putting Apple computers into our schools this fall. And so, this fall, we'll be putting IMAX in every school, predominantly to be used for multimedia creation. And then we'll also be working with community ed to put a IMAC computer lab in here in this building as well. So we're starting to look at how Macintosh computers can be used as an instructional tool within the district. So that is the Chromebook order and the i, the Macintosh order, which is iPads and then IMAX. I'll just keep going if that's all right?
Yep.
The Lenovo's is the last of our, our refresh computers. It's for Creek Valley. It's an all-in-one computer. We're pretty excited about seeing that, because it will save space on the desktops. And just to give you kind of a count, running total of computers, after these actions are approved, we'll have close to 1,000 new devices, or 25% of our computer inventory either refreshed or new from the technology levy and the plans. And so we really hope to address having equitable and access to updated technology for not only our students, but also our teachers and our staff. SmartNet is that service agreement that we, we do every year in order to ensure that our core network is up and running. Again, it provides for assistance if we need it, software upgrades, and then also hardware if a piece of hardware fails. We purchase it on an annual basis, because every year we look to try to save money. So instead of doing a longer term, we prefer to do an annual basis and try to find out where is that we can save money on this one. And then finally, Microsoft enrollment. Last year, we looked at, instead of owning Microsoft operating system and Office outright, was to lease it. The value of this agreement is it's, it's priced on FTE, and so it actually makes it much cheaper for us to own and keep up to date on our Microsoft products. And so this summer, we are upgrading all of our computers, almost 3,888 computers, to Windows 7 and Office 2010. That project's going well, going along right now, and it's gone very well. This allows us to keep up to date, and I've heard rumors that Office 2014 is coming out in, in another year, and we've seen that Windows 8 is coming out. And so, this will allow us, because we're on a subscription basis, this will allow us to take advantage of those operating systems and those advancements as we deem fit. Finally, the Project Lead the Way. I just want to give you, I'm not sure if Rick or the superintendent shared with you, but Project Lead the Way's been incredibly successful in our district. This spring, the results from our students taking the tests which allow them for college credit has been absolutely phenomenal, where we've had over 166 students receive college credit using the Project Lead the Way program. Just to give you an idea of what the savings is, that's $206,000 worth of savings for our families by taking Project Lead the Way and getting credit. Our last class is design engineering, and that starts this fall at the high school. And this action item is to provide the startup curriculum materials and technologies to get that final project off the ground.
Thank you, Steve. It's a lot of information there. Questions on any one of those? Comments? All those in favor of approving combined items N through T related to, which are all technology approvals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve, for all your work.
Really exciting, Steve.
Thank you for your support.
Next up, we have the purchase of music, music instruments and equipment. Can I have a motion, please?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Jenny, your last remarks?
It might not be. You have another resolution coming.
Don't say last, because we don't, we never know.
Yeah, never, he says, never.
Before your current retirement.
This is an annual purchase that we have scheduled to replace musical instruments as they do wear out over time, and so we have a cycle on which we do that. We've been out for four bids. This is primarily dealing with band instruments. Orchestra may come forward yet with some additional requests.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for purchase of music instruments and equipment. Next up, the purchase of materials for Edina Secondary Language Arts Program. Motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Jenny?
This one does have some interesting perspectives. This bid, when we first went out for it, we had books listed at over $450,000. So we've cut it back by quite a bit, just going through bid process, and started out with seven vendors and finally got down to three that were very close and one that met all of our specifications. The most interesting thing to me about the process is that one of the questions that we asked is what could we get in ebook version? And what we found was that of the titles that we were seeking, about half of them existed in ebook form, others did not. And of the half that existed in ebook form, about half of those will run on the ebook platform that we have. So, that means that of the titles that we have, about a fourth will be available to students in an ebook format, and we'll kind of track that and see how those usages go.
Thank you very much. Additional discussion?
I have a question about the ebook platform. What does that, or could you give an example? Is it usable with a student's own device or the platform that exists on district equipment?
So, you, you can go to the high school, right now you could. You could go to the high school and you can check out a book on whatever the device is that you have. It's that the, the platform, so the, the books themselves are formatted to run on certain kinds of platforms. They're not, it's not, there's not an industry standard yet. So, different vendors, if you will, are available through different, it's like an operating system, if that makes sense.
Right. But, so if our student had a Nook and another student had a Kindle...
I don't believe that matters.
...then check out the book.
Mr. Butner?
So, as we like to say, the publishing industry is experiencing significant disruption right now, and the people who own the rights to the books are the publishing companies, and then what they do is decide to license it. So you might find one book that's licensed to the Nook or Barnes &amp; Noble, and you might find that same book licensed to the Kindle, in which case we can distribute it, because we can distribute to the Nook or the Kindle. What we find, though, is sometimes those electronic books aren't released by the publisher to the Kindle or released to the Nook. And so what we find is, they're marginalizing themselves just based on the, the rights that the publishing companies are, the way they're distributing those products.
So when you say that out of the 50% that are available, only half of those are available on our platform, that means that the, the half that aren't available, it's because they're restricted, so if we had them, people couldn't use them with all the different devices they would have?
Right. We, we want something that runs on what we can, we can make available to our students.
So, are these books then going to be checked out like library books through the library or, excuse me, media center?
So, what we did as an example, if you were to pick a title, we would have purchased, because the, the availability of the ebook and the accessibility, depending on what students own for devices, isn't yet reliable enough to make that the primary format, if you will, in a given classroom. So, just like, I'll give you an example. Right now, the Summer Read for administrators in the district has been distributed in hard copy. I believe you're going to be leading a discussion on it. But in addition to that, there's an email that went out that said if you want to download that on your Kindle, you can. So, there's a choice. In this case, students will all have access to the hardbound book. Those who wish to check it out for the number of copies that we have might take advantage of that and will collect feedback from them as to how they felt about that experience as well.
Okay.
Additional discussion? Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the purchase of materials for Edina Secondary Arts Program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are on to discussion items. First item is Policy 104. Anybody? Clarification of policy?
It's a general complaint policy for, for if there's, in, if, certain policies have their own complaint procedures, like if it's a harassment or discrimination complaint. There are other complaints about things that go on in our schools. We have a general complaint policy, and this is it. And it was just cleaned up to make it more clear as to, you know, where you would go at a, at a particular time. And then there was also an addition of an appendix that sets it out step by step what protocols would be followed.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments? Next item is Policy 420. Personal employees with sexually transmitted infectious diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Clarification of policy for compliance.
Right. It, it's to bring it into compliance with state and federal law.
And also to clean up language, such as using the word employees instead of staff and just general procedures that we're using in all our policies as we go through them, so that they all are internally consistent.
Where's the compartment? You missed the word.
It's not the word anymore. It's ambit, it's the new word.
Policy, policy, where have I been? revised Policy 431, personnel compensatory practices.
Same, same issue with this policy is just to make it read more cleanly and to tweak it so that the policy actually follows the practices that we are using in the district.
Revise, questions, comments? Revised Policy 510, students, non-resident enrollment. Updating the current practice. Any comments?
Well, part of the, again, series review, most of it's cleanup.
Any major changes to this?
No major changes. There are just some language cleanup where as we read it as a board, as a policy committee, wanted to make it clear that we really understood what we were saying. So it's mainly clarifying the language, but not changing the intent.
Okay.
It's marked up with the changes. Next item, 602, education programs, organization of school day and calendar.
Again, those are just minor changes to, to make sure that we, the joint policy committee's now referred to as "me and confer," and because state law now talks about hours instead of days, we changed the language so that we would be in compliance with state law.
Okay, and the final one is, I guess we have two more. Policy 626, education programs, independent provider activities, programs? Activity programs? Clarification of practices?
Yes, also put some, oh, go ahead.
That's fine. Just clarifying that there are several independent providers that the district works with, so it's become more consistent. So, having the policy reflect actual use and the changes are noted, that streamlines it.
Thank you. Policy 509, students, student enrollment.
This is a change in the residency practice as far as limiting some options for what middle school students can tend, attend, especially at Highlands due to capacity issues that we're reaching at our two middle schools, Southview and Valley View. We have had conversations with the leadership groups at Highlands about this, and we'll make them aware of it. That would be probably the change in practice, that we want to make sure the public is aware before we finalize it.
And what is the change? That's being recommended?
Just... That Highland students are assigned to the Southview as a middle school, rather than past practice was they were allowed to have a choice.
But it's, what was the percentage that was going to Southview anyway?
The percentage that is, the percentage going to Valley View was probably six or seven students out of the 90 students, and as part of the policy, they're grant-pubg. And so if they have a sibling there, they apply through the inter-district transfer process. So there'd still be an opportunity to go to Valley View through an inter-district transfer process, but really eliminating the, allowing potentially 90 families every year to choose. It could put us into a tough situation if we really did choose to go to Valley View. You have, you know, one middle school, we have two feeder schools, and the second middle school has four feeder schools.
It seems like a logical clarification in policy, because at this point, then we would have three elementaries assigned to each middle school, correct?
And, and it also makes, the policy also makes it much clearer that if you're in a choice program in elementary school, you go to your middle school based on your residence elementary school, not your choice. elementary school, not your choice middle school, except for Normandale French immersion if you're going into extended French, you'd obviously go to Valley View because that's the only place the program is.
So, does that affect our numbers Mary?
No, that really is more of a, of a transportation piece.
Okay.
Is, you know, there, the, the continuous progress programs at both countryside, which is on the west side in Highlands which is more of an east, really are a K five, well really a, a one-five program and that ends after fifth grade and sometimes there are families who live on the west side who'd like to have their children go to Southview where we don't provide transportation for that. So, if they live in the Creek Valley or countryside attendance area and they'd like to go to Southview, they would have to apply for an intra-district transfer because of their resident attendance area, not the elementary school. If it's a choice program and the choice program ends after the completion of fifth grade, they want to attend the other elementary school, they'd have to apply through intra-district transfer.
And so, when, when, when we're done with the grandfather children, we're not going to transport students from the west side of Highlands attendance to, to Valley View?
The intention would be if you live on, if you're in the Highlands attendance area, you would be attending, you would be attending Southview Middle School.
Both west and east since it picks up the west, there's, okay.
Yeah, so there'll not, not be any transportation provided. Are, are we still going to grandfather and give transportation? The students that are currently attending.
If they're, yeah, or if they, if they have siblings.
But everybody going to Highlands will be, will go to Southview and will be bused. That, that, that's their neighborhood school.
Right. Got it. Right, and just for the board's information, the, the version of, of policy five oh nine that's in your board packet has all the correct language but not everything that is changed is either stricken through or highlighted and so in your, the packet at your table, you have a version that gives you all the changes so it's easier to follow if you want to see what's been changed in that policy.
And how will we communicate this to parents?
Peter Rodney, the principal already has had some communications with both parent council, both the CP parent council group and with the Discovery Parent Council group and there'll be some notifications sent out to fifth grade families that this is the going, this will be the policy moving forward.
Thanks Mary. Additional discussion? And all these are scheduled to come back in July?
That's correct.
Thank you policy for all your work. Additional information, announcements?
Ed Fund, the year, fundraising year will be done at the end of this month and we're a little short of the goal so anyone who still wishes to make a contribution is welcome.
Thank you Ed. Anybody else? Rick?
We're looking at a city school district meeting for the Tuesday, August twenty-first at five PM. We'll send that out but that's the day after our regular meeting. It would be at five o'clock and the city has their city council meeting at seven so it would be our opportunity to go to the city and then have them be on the time schedule rather than us being on the time schedule. That's always a good time to connect, remind the board that there's a survey out there just on communications so if you could take some time to complete that, we'd appreciate that. The board did receive at their, at their spots, the Summer Book Read which is Healing the Heart of Democracy by Parker Palmer, it's a great book. Our own Lonnie Stritner is helping with this work but it's also going to be important work for us as a school district as we move forward on how we can do outreach to our community and we're going to use that as a kind of a guiding source for us this fall so I'd encourage the board to take a look at that and we'll have probably more discussion on that. We have transition going on with Jenny Norland Weaver. Actually, this is her last board meeting and she met earlier this evening with Randy Smazel, our new director of teaching and learning. Susan Brott is coming on board as director of communications, all those positions to occur. We are in the process of filling the assistant principal at Southview Middle School and Gwen is in the middle of working with the team of Southview staff members to fulfill that position. We also have an assistant special, special services director that we're working on to fill as well. There's a good possibility we might fill that with an interim position for one year and then look at just what should the special services model look going forward and this would be our opportunity to possibly look at some staffing revisions around that. And that would pretty much conclude thoughts and comments. Board members remind, remember that the school board convention is in August and if you are interested in participating, Julie has registrations on that.
Any additional items? We will have a board annual review for Rick and sort of a planning session for the year which we always do, either in July or August depending upon schedules. And Jenny, any, any parting thoughts as you leave us?
And then Chad will make fun of me for never being able to say no. I just want to thank all of the board and my colleagues and the community for a great run and for the opportunity to serve Edina. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Jenny.
You will be missed.
Very much.
Anything else, anything we're missing? Move to adjourn, again in honor of Jenny Norland Weaver.
Yes.
Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned.